The first one is a resolution to add public comment in another round of council comment for each legislative initiative. Who will speak to this resolution?
Yes. This is my resolution, and I've been working on it, I think, since the second council meeting that I came to. And what I'm asking, or what this resolution states, is that the public is allowed to speak during council meetings on the subject that's on the agenda. And to make that more understandable, if we're discussing schools, if that's on our agenda, after the council members each get their round of five minutes, then the public may come and speak on that subject. They cannot speak on other subjects that are on the agenda until that subject is brought up and the council is in that discussion. I think this is necessary. I have been to county council meetings. They seem to run smoothly. They don't last extraordinarily long lengths of time. People are usually very succinct in their comments. And with everything that's been going on, and all the media and comments in the public and my constituents, this is something they really want. They want to be able to come to council and express their opinion about the subject. They are the people we represent, our constituents. We're supposed to be listening to them. And other than going to community meetings and running into them on the corner, they don't have an opportunity to speak to their representatives. So this is my resolution to address that problem. We already have one suit against President Chabaz for not allowing someone to speak. And I even had something I had gotten from the Internet that said that people could sue if they were refused to allow, refused to be allowed to speak if public comment is allowed. And that's exactly what happened. Public comment, we do allow. Someone refused their ability to speak, and they filed a suit. So luckily, or so far, there's only one person being addressed in this complaint or suit, whichever one it is. But all of us could be held liable at some point. So any?
Counselor Johnson.
This is one subject area which I will strongly voice my opinion as, on the state level. I was the FOIA coordinator for the governor's office, so I understand ins and outs of this. We need, we do need a point of clarity in that this suit is a FOIA complaint, not a lawsuit per se. It's a FOIA complaint that goes to the Attorney General's office. That's administrative proceeding if someone feels like their FOIA rights are violated. But moving to the substance of the matter, I certainly understand Councilwoman Gray's need to increase public transparency. I'm all for that. I think there's other ways we can do that, rather than open up public comment during legislative business. If you check Philadelphia, New York, Baltimore, LA, DC, there's no other legislative body, city similar to ours, that allows this process. It is simply not effective. I don't think it's a good use of the public's time. And when we're deliberating, we need to get to the heart of the matter. Now, I am open to being similar to the state, where if you're a subject matter expert, you can testify. That's what you'd find down in Dover, if someone is a subject matter expert, they can testify on the floor of Legislative Hall. I'm all for that. But unless it's going to necessarily help us, the public has plenty of opportunities to participate in the process during committee hearings, during town halls, during other businesses. And we would literally be here probably till 2:00 a.m. most legislative nights. And I understand county council does it, but county council does not nearly have the attention that we have, and is not dealing with the same kind of matters. But this is one thing I just, I am strongly, I think that the matter last meeting, I'm in between, but this one, I'm strongly against doing this this way. I think maybe making public comments start earlier, that may be something we can do so we can include more of the public. I'm open to that. But it cannot be during legislative business, because when we're performing legislative business, we need to perform legislative business. Just check out the other cities. They do not do this.
Counselor McConaughey.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. For all the reasons that Counsel Man Johnson said that we don't need to do this, I believe that is exactly why we need to do it. And he spoke of getting to the heart of the matter. He spoke of getting to legislative business, but the heart of the matter of what we do and why we're here is the people who we serve. And I'm the kind of guy, I learn when other people are in the room having a discussion. So I believe that if the public can hear us, hear council members talk about different legislation, and then something might chime in their head, and they might want to come up and say something to maybe even enlighten us, I think that's a win-win situation. A lot of committee meetings start at 5:00. And a lot of people aren't off work and can't get here. But council meetings start later. So a lot of people from the community are able to come to council meetings just because of the timing. When they get off, they can do what they need to do and be here and participate. I think this is probably one of the best pieces of legislation that we have had since I've been on council. Because while we're here, it's for people. And for us to not want that and open that and accept that with open arms is really, really confusing. I understand that what our jobs are to do, and we get, I think we get caught up in terminology and council members and legislative business, but we're here for people. And if we don't agree with people being here and helping us to make decisions that are going to affect them, we're here for the wrong reasons. And if we're here till 2:00 a.m., we're just here till 2:00 a.m. And I think this piece right here would just open up opportunity for, all we do is talk about how people don't come to meetings. But I think this is going to help more people to come, because if they know that they can hear us and then come up and give us some guidance, or maybe bring something to us, or maybe we can bring something to them, and they can talk about it, and we can talk about it together, as we're supposed to do, because we can't, they can't always come to committee meetings because of the timing. This should vote, I mean, this should pass unanimously, in my opinion. Thank you.
I'd just like to get clarity of my understanding of what I've read about this legislation as compared as, and also listening to what the sponsor said. In my understanding, the resolution is stating that after each piece of legislative business on the council meeting's agenda, that the public has the, you want the public to be allowed to come and give three-minute increment comments?
Correct.
And then maybe we go back into the two rounds, oh, final round, a final round of debate by members of City Council?
Correct.
Oh, Counselman Gray?
Yes, I just have to correct Counselman Johnson. I've been to several county council meetings, and the last one I went to was last night or night before last, and it was about Barley Mills. They've been dealing with that for two years. The room was packed. There was over 100 people there. They started at 6:30, they were out by 8:15. And everyone that wanted to speak spoke. So I disagree that you'll be there till 2:00 a.m. And if you haven't been to a county meeting to see how they handle it, then, Mr. Johnson, you need to go, because there's no 2:00 a.m. And they allow people to speak on every legislative matter, whomever wants to speak. And they don't have to get there at a certain time to sign up either. So I totally disagree with the length of the meeting. Our last meeting, we were there until 9:10, 9:15, the last meeting we had. So it just depends on what's on the agenda. It was what? It was 10:00. So it just depends on what's on the agenda. But the Barley Mill matter was a big thing for county council, and it has been a two-year process. And like I said, they were in there at 6:30 and out by, I think it was like 8:15. So I just wanted to correct that.
Counselman Turner?
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's very interesting, whenever you have a, first and foremost, this piece of legislation is excellent. Thank you, Counselman Gray, for bringing this up, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. And, but it's mighty funny when you have legislation that are for the public, are for transparency, and then we have people that are objecting of that. We sit here because of the public. We sit here because of the people. So whenever it comes to legislation that helps them get their say out, their word, their voice, their speech, they're able to get that out, I think we have to protect that. Councilwoman Gray spoke about not having to come and sign a list by a certain time to be able to speak. Also, if you're on the list, you know, if it's 15 people on there, and all the 10 people, people in front of you speak for three minutes, you have no time to speak. So now, they might not can't make it to the next council meeting or the next committee meeting, but they had something that they wanted to tell us about. What's their platform? So there are some things that this should address. Maybe you might not agree with every subject, subject that being able to speak on every agenda item on the legislative side, but you can't think that when people, 20, 30 people sign up for public comment, and only 10 people out of the 20, 30 get to speak, and people done caught three buses, then caught Ubers, caught Lyft, hopped ride from the grocery store to get here, and we're going to sit here and say, nah, because you didn't sign in by 5:45, you can't speak. We don't know what that person went through to get here to speak and tell us her mind. We're going to sit here and tell them, nah, we're not going to expand on helping you to be able to speak? That, I mean, that's not what we're here for. And I hope everybody that's watching or in the public are paying attention to who's not trying to fight for your rights to be able to speak. That's all I have to say.
Counselman Guy?
Yes. There's, in government, sometimes there can be a body of laws that require certain things to take place. And like every government has their level, if you will. And so our charter doesn't determine for us how we conduct our city council meeting, but it does have, between our charter and our code and federal laws, that exist, that have implications to what we do, there are certain things that we are required to do, and we have no choice in it. Like posting the notice in the lobby, things of that nature, having an agenda, how many people it takes to vote to pass an ordinance or resolution. Those things are required through our charter or code, et cetera. And so depending upon what you're doing, that's going to determine what you have to look up. But now, when it comes to the conduct of our meeting, there is no prohibition to us being inclusionary with respect to the public. We have the authority to decide that's what we want to do. I love democracy because it's an experiment. So sometimes, the first time you try to do something, you may not get it perfect. And so laws are constantly being amended, rules are constantly being amended, guidelines updated. And so we're in a ugly situation right now, because just we as city council, the state of Delaware has found us to be in violation of the Freedom of Information Act three times. We've only been here three years. We're on record as a lawless city council. That's not open, that's not transparent. The public is looking at us funny about money, how that's handled. The auditor said that all these laws have been violated by city council. That's what the thing said. And then they specified who it is in city council right now. So what I'm saying to you is that the authority rests in us. We've had citizens come to our meeting and be arrested, right? Like, no government wants the headline to say that citizen, look at, look at the room right now. We're meeting, discussing citizen participation, and there's a whole bunch of citizens who's half scared to come to council meetings now, because it's a police state. We was on live TV with the police trying to mess with a guy who was speaking. That's who we are. That's what people look at us as, that kind of people. What this does is, this is a great effort to do what everybody in the world is trying to do, and that's operate in real time. The whole society is trying to operate in real time. So if somebody gets pulled over and arrested, they want it right in the computer. So if 10 minutes later, something happens, the information's in the computer system, real time. For the citizens, real time is when all of us are sitting there focused on a piece of legislation, we're arguing back and forth, making our positions known, we all get our opportunity to speak. Usually, most of us don't speak on everything. And then we pause, and now we listen to anybody in the public who wants to hear from us. That's what I'd rather us to be known for, as wanting to try to include an opportunity for the people to be heard when it matters. To have an opportunity when it matters, when we're about to make the decision. And after we hear from them, all governments, you can go to any government meeting in America, and you know what the government people do? The public speaks, and the government people sit there and listen, and don't say nothing back, don't comment, no reaction. And it's basically what they call absorbing what the community has to say, but having no respect for the content of it. Well, now, once they get to speak, then after they speak, that's when we really need to have an opportunity to say, well, whoa, I just heard something that makes a difference in how I'm looking at this. Or, wow, there's something in this we didn't think about. Or maybe nothing changes your mind, maybe you have nothing to say. But there should be an opportunity to react to what they say, and that's built into this. So this is, it's an experiment, but it's a controlled experiment. It has time limits in it, so it's just not anything. They have to stay focused on the topic of the legislation. So, you know, I think it's like an excellent approach to trying to include the public, Councilwoman Gray, and also for us to be respectful of the public. And we might, if we were here till 2:00 o'clock at night, we meet twice a month. The only reason we have special meetings is because we're not being respected with respect to things getting on committee agendas and agendas. So we shouldn't have to have special meetings, but that's what happens when we are disregarded as a group of people. So if twice a month, we have to come here and we're here all night long, the people's opportunity to speak is important to me, and I support this. But I don't think every night is going to be a 2:00 meeting, but if it is, so be. And if we find out that there's something we need to tweak, then we'll come back and tweak it. I think we change the time that we started our meetings. I think we used to start our meeting at a different time, and then we'd once vote to change the time.
30 seconds, Mr. Guy.
Well, so we changed things, we tweaked things. So thank you, Councilwoman Gray. This is a great idea.
Counselman Johnson?
Just a quick response, since I was mentioned in some comments. This is, again, this is about the First Amendment, and as I've stated before, those who know the legal parameters of First Amendment, it's not unlimited. There's time, place, and manner restrictions on all speech in general. Like, you can't yell fire in a theater. You can't do that. So I understand there was a specific incident with the individual, and then let that process play out. I'm not going to take sides on that issue. But in terms of how meetings are conducted, I mean, if you go down to Congress, you know, there is not, you just don't walk in from the street and testify on the floor of Congress. So there's just certain sanctums that are for the legislators, and the public has plenty of opportunity to participate. And in the society in which we live in, we don't want to start to discouraging people to participate. If people know that council meeting is going to be four or five hours long, they're not going to participate. They don't participate as it is. So we need to worry about getting a more inclusive committee structure. I think maybe pushing the times back, making public comment earlier, that's fine. But it is, this is truly, we are engaging with our constituents 24/7. And the floor, where there's a vote, at the legislative floor, that is the one time in which the public has already put their input in, and we have to be fine with that. So I understand about transparency and openness, but there has to be certain limits. And there has to be, you know, you mentioned an individual there. You know, I was involved in that meeting. He was, he had a lack of decorum and respect for individuals who were present. And so there's conduct like that, that we're trying to stray away from. And if you're a subject matter expert, I'm open to someone testifying. But generally, the public has plenty of opportunities, time and time again, to participate. And we have to put our foot down as a legislative body at some point, not saying what feels good, but what actually works. Because we have a hefty legislative list to go through, and it can't be, you know, taken down by public comment that may be inflammatory, because you have to look at that side. There's some members of the public can't be controlled, and they may say disrespectful, inflammatory, derogatory things. So again, what's going to happen when that happens? So, that's again, I respect your view on this, and I'm certainly for expanding how we do it, but in terms of the floor, the legislative vote, I think we need to just worry about other tweaks, that's not, you know, interspersing public comment.
Counselman Gray, did you have any?
Yes, but I'll wait.
Thank you. Counselwoman Harlan?
Thank you, Council President. So for clarity, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the ask is here. So one, are we saying that there is no limit on the timeframe when they can sign up? That's number one. So in other words, instead of them having to sign up by a certain time, they can just sign up at any time? That's one. Number two, they can talk as long as they want? That's number two. And basically, those are the two points I just want to make sure I'm clear on. Is there any limitations or guidelines around those two?
Counselman Gray?
One, I don't think I included a sign-up list, but they are restricted to the same three minutes. Each person only gets three minutes to speak.
Follow-up? Counselman Harley?
Okay, so three minutes, and we just let people make sure that everyone that comes to speak will have that opportunity. That's pretty much what this is about.
Correct. I mean, on the side, the way other people handle it that use our chambers, people just line up along the side and come up and speak for three minutes or less. There's no necessity for a sign-up list. And what I see has happened in other instances, that people who do not want to speak on specific items on the legislation, they don't stick around. And talking about four- and five-hour meetings, people don't have to stay. Once they hear what they want to hear or say what they have to say, they're welcome to leave.
Counselman Harley?
Yes, so, so do you think there should be a guideline as to when they at least come and sign up? So for example, I mean, we, you know, every, you have to have some rules in terms of, you know, keeping order. If we allow everyone to speak, as long as you're there by, what, 6:00, 6:30? Or is that something you have or have not thought about?
I thought about that, and I'll take it into consideration. And I hate to keep mentioning this, but I just went to county meetings, and that wasn't necessary. I mean, people did have to identify themselves when they took the podium, but there was no previous sign-up or checking in or anything. They just signed us. They just lined up against the wall after the president of council asked for public comments. People came up and stood there, and they just took their minute or two minutes and spoke, and that was it.
Thank you.
So I will take in consideration what you're saying about signing up, what that involves. And there was no timeline for people arriving, like they could, since the agendas are posted, some people would arrive like right before the issue they're interested in, rather than coming and sitting through the whole meeting like ours have to, because they have to make sure they sign up. So doing away with the sign-up requirement means that people don't have to be there at the beginning of the meeting. Thereby, transportation might not be as much of a problem either.
Counselman Harley?
Thank you. So I'm thinking that the sign-up is, would be to help us to keep order in the sense of just knowing that at a certain time, if there is a cutoff, you know, let's say, for instance, if there's a sign-up sheet and the cutoff is at 6:30 or 7:00. If you have a sign-up sheet, then the sign-up sheet could be picked up at whatever time that we're saying, okay, as long, you can come and speak for three minutes up until a certain time. So if the sign-up sheet is there, let's say if it's to 6:30, 7:00, or whatever the time is, then the sign-up sheet is removed. Because if you don't have a sign-up sheet, it's going to be very difficult to determine, like, who was really there, were they there on time, et cetera. So I was just thinking in terms of some order, very supportive of people being able to speak and share with us, you know, what they want to share with us. But I do think that we may need to have some guidelines in terms of what time they need to be at council to be able to speak.
Can I get clarity, based on the conversation back and forth now? Are you saying, Councilwoman Gray, that after each piece of legislation, county council then asked people for public comments, and it came up after each piece?
Yes.
Or the president, just, and those people, just from the audience, just got up and came and spoke?
Yes, just got up and lined up against the wall and spoke. And that, what I'm trying to prevent is people, or what I'm trying to promote, is that people don't have to have a time limit to get there. They can come like at 8:00 if their piece of legislation that they want to speak to is the last thing on the agenda. If we have a sign-up list that we're going to pull, that means people are going to have the same problems they have now. They have to get there at a certain time, they have to make sure they're on the list. But note to President's question, what I observed was the council president, county council president, after all the council had their comments, she said, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? And people got up, came around, lined up, and spoke one by one. That was it.
Counselman Dixon?
Thank you, Madam President. Almost lost my train of thought. As far as the, because what comes up a lot of times is in council currently, is that when the public does come up to speak, they say, well, I'm not speaking to any council members because they're not here. So most of the time, we don't even hear what they're actually talking about, because we're not really slated to be there until 6:30, for all council members to be there in attendance. So unless you're, in some cases, changing that also, that would be the only way to really hear out what the public is saying also, because that is a main theme that continues to come up during our public comment when we are at council meetings. And then, I don't know if this is a thing that we do or don't do in general, but I would just be curious to know, how many times have you really followed up from comments from the public on specific issues? Because in some cases, it's good to have people kind of talk about what's going on in their different communities, but what are we actually doing in action to follow up on their actual responses or questions that they have based on legislation that's specific to them? So I would also like to know if we do that in general, or do we just respond to those based on if it's in your district?
Counselman Turner, and then Counselman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an interesting topic. I hear what Councilwoman Harley is asking about the names and the time restriction. My understanding of this legislation is, once their agenda item comes up that they want to speak on, they just go line up and go speak on it. So with that being said, if we are in one of those late nights, that's, or late mornings, that's 2:00 in the morning, and their agenda item comes up at 1:45 in the morning, and they're there to speak, I don't care if they weren't there at 6:30 in the morning, but they came in at 1:15, at 1:45 when their agenda item was to speak, I think this is saying that they can speak to that agenda item. And I can get clarity from the sponsor on that, but that's what I, that's what I got. And I think it's a great piece of legislation. I think if they have something to say about the items that are on the agenda, they'd be able to talk about it. Public comment at the beginning at 6:00 is not just a platform for legislation, so if someone had to speak to a legislation, and they were number 13 on the list, it's possible they'd never get a chance to speak to the legislation, because the other 12 people in front of them was talking about topics that might not have been a part of the agenda. So when do we get a time to hear from somebody that really has something to say about an agenda item, but they're number 13 on the list, and 12 people spoke for 2 minutes and 40 seconds? Now, suddenly, they don't have time to speak on it? Now of a sudden, they don't have time to speak on their, on their time? You know, because now, public comment is over at six thirty. We don't give leeway and say, okay, we got fifty people to sign up. We're going to hear all fifty people out, and then we'll start council meeting after that. We sit there and say, all right, well, we got council meeting starting in the next three minutes. Whoever gets in the, the last three minutes can speak, the rest of you can't. We're going to start business as usual, instead of saying, being considerate of them, and saying, okay, we'll start council later, we'll keep hearing public comment. You know, so we, there are certain things that we need to, we need to be doing as, as council as well, to protect and hear from, hear from the, the people. And I keep hearing the subject matter expert. I hear it. But the subject matter expert is the people. They're the subject matter expert. They're the expert on these subjects. So yeah, we want to hear from them on every agenda item, we should want to hear from them so they can express theirself as that subject item expert.
Wait, I just, I just want to share one, but go ahead, I'll wait.
I just, just as a point of clarity again, I'm, I'm using a quasi-legal term, because the subject matter expert is someone that is, 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 has enough professional background and qualifications to testify. Like if I had a, um, a medical malpractice case, I can't pull out my friend from around the street and have him testify about the medical malpractice. I need a licensed practitioner who is an expert in that. That's what I mean, is not to denigrate any citizen, they're all, help us make our decisions. But I'm along with what Councilwoman Dixon said, is we need to figure out how to make the, the other processes more inclusive, including the committee process that starts at four or five o'clock. That's hard for even a lot of us to make. So I think we need to look at those structures, but hold the sanctity of the legislative business that is, which is robust enough, let's leave that to the floor vote, similar to what they do in almost every other city across this nation.
Well, what, uh, thank you, Councilman Johnson. What also, I was going to reiterate that we have, yes, we have the committee meetings, and historically, they used to be at four o'clock, we moved to four thirty, then we moved them to five. Um, so just wanted you to know the history of the timing of committee meetings. Um, and we have civic association meetings, when you're putting through legislation and you want to know what the people think about it, most likely it's because you've been to civic association meetings, you know what their people are saying to you, which is when it results in the writing and the development of legislation to address their issues. So when you do an ordinance, you have, it's presented first and second, which gives you, if you, when you, it gives you opportunity to hear from your constituencies on how they feel about that, and you come back on the floor during the legislative time of us handling the agenda of the, of the business of the sitting, and that's when you speak the voice of the, of the people, because you've done your due diligence, you've talked to constituents, they've talked to you, and whether, various other, um, um, means to, whether, whether it's a committee meeting, or whether it's your civic association meeting, your, your neighborhood planning council, but your continuous communication with your people gives you that voice in your ear. So when you come to make, you do your job as the legislator, then that's when you, you espouse the comments and the pleasures of the people that you represent. Councilwoman Harley?
Uh, thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Guy, I have you down, there's two other people in front of you.
Um, so I just wanted to say, I was just trying to get clarity on, um, what we were after with the legislation, you know, just asking those questions. And so I just wanted to be clear on that. And having said that, I'm going to ask to be excused.
Council, um, with Councilman Congo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Your excuse.
I think we have to, um, we have to not always go to what we think may be the worst-case scenario. A lot of us are getting caught up, well, some of us are getting caught up in being in council meetings all night. And like, in reality, our council meetings aren't really attended by that many people in the first place. So, and most, and a lot of our council meetings don't have that many hot topics on the agenda. Let's just talk in reality. I mean, this has just given the opportunity for the public to speak, for our employers to speak. We, I, I would think that we want to hear from our employers at a, a time when they can hopefully enlighten us, or maybe they can be enlightened by us. So for us to, to have some, some hesitancy because we think the meetings may be long and drawn out, and that's not really even going to be the reality. Because there just aren't that many topics that we deal with, like Councilman Guy said, twice a month. And if it comes down to it, we just got to dig in our boots and, and, and learn from each other. So it's not going to be a, a three or four hour meeting, council meeting every other Thursday, because that's just not the nature of our council business. A lot of our stuff just doesn't, it, it, it's not, there are not that many hot topics. But again, when they are, we just got to do what we're paid to do, and that's to listen. Thank you.
Councilman Guy.
Yes, Madam President. The, um, it's interesting, because when we talk about subject matter experts, the treasurer of the city of Wilmington has been the state treasurer and the finance director for the city. And on a regular occasion...
Can I get a point of order?
She as a subject matter expert...
I think you do, I don't see where, I know that was a comment that was made.
Yes, it was.
And I'm trying to, and it was all reference to the, to the item on the agenda.
Yeah, you, you're...
So you're answering, I just want clarity, are you just answering his comment about that, or are you making more comment about the resolution?
I'm exercising my turn to speak, and I don't know why it's always your interest in presenting that, preventing that from happening.
I'm just trying to get clarity, so I can listen at you, understand your perspective.
Let me finish what I have to say. This, this is how you treat the citizens. That's why we're having this conversation, primarily because of how you treat the citizen.
I just said it's for clarity, sir.
Yeah, well, let me finish. You haven't interfered with one person who spoke. So now, when we talk about subject matter experts, we have a treasurer of the city of Wilmington, who's a subject matter expert, been the state treasurer, city finance director. So we do not give respect, like we should, to subject matter experts at city council committee meetings, et cetera. There's been instances where our own treasurer, who's a subject matter expert, couldn't speak. So we don't have a commitment to subject matter experts, we have a commitment to giving certain people preference, and not giving the little guy preference. That's what our interest is. So I'm not buying the argument about, don't let the regular citizen speak and let a subject matter expert. Who's going to decide who the subject matter expert is? The mayor's office, or whoever, whatever message they send down, or who they want to block from speaking. What we're doing here, if we do this, is we're treating everybody equally who wants to speak on that topic that's up for discussion. And not only is that fair, it's also us being respectful at the right time, at the time when we're listening, as, as, um, Councilwoman stated. A person may be there before the council meeting, and not, and, and maybe nobody from council is there, or maybe half of the council is there, maybe all the council is there. But the council people aren't necessarily focusing on a particular piece of legislation when the people speak at the meeting before the meeting. But when you're focused as legislators on a piece of legislation, and that's when people get to share their thought, they may have come to the committee meetings, they may have been to community meetings, but now it's showtime, it's game time. And they may have something new to say that they didn't get to say before. And I'm just saying, I understand there's risks in not being able to control us, being able to come in and run in and have an hour meeting and leave. Okay? And that's not the priority here. This is an effort to be, to try to be inclusive at the right time. It's the right spirit, and we need this more than we need a glass of water, given the things we've been doing contrary to the interests of citizens. Citizen participations, and, and let me make this comment, because as a, as an organization, we don't even respect council members getting to speak. We have people chairing committees, chair, presiding at meetings, who if they have a problem with what a person, what they think a person is going to say. We cheat by interfering with them, by cutting in on them, by wanting to inquire about, what are you going to say? Just as what happened to me right here, in an effort to interfere with what I had to say, but a person said, spoke on the same topic twice. But you never cut them off, because they're saying what you want to hear. They're speaking against this. At some point in time, the public notices that, heck, the people running the city council meetings and committees, half the time, they don't even have any respect for the council people when the rules of council say council members get to speak twice, twice in five-minute increments. It's on videotape, where I think at the last meeting or the meeting before, you did that to me as a council person. So, so the citizens looking and saying, okay, I told my councilman what I wanted him to say, but the president or the committee chair, Freel, or whoever else, they're trying to prevent him from talking, so now the constituents' voice doesn't get heard, because we cheat in our meeting. So now the citizen gets to come themselves and say what they have to say. So that's great, that there's another opportunity. And maybe what should happen is if the president is not comfortable interacting with the public during the public comment period...
You have ten seconds, Mr. Guy.
The president can always say to the pro temp, hey, could you do the public comment period? Or get another council person to handle the, the public comment period, if you don't have the temperament to do it. Other than that...
Your time, sir.
That's where we should go.
Councilman Freel.
Uh, I have a question before I make my comments. Are the county council meetings televised?
Uh, I'm not sure. I don't think they are. I think they're attempting to do that. They're in the process of...
Okay, thank you.
But not now.
Just a couple of comments. Um, the, the sponsor mentioned the number of calls and people that have approached her about doing this. I have not seen any interest, uh, from people I speak to in my district pushing for this kind of change. I only know of one person, uh, whose name I'm not going to mention, who, uh, who has raised this issue, uh, quite a bit over the last couple of months. I have no problem making changes, uh, to the committee meetings time-wise, or the public comment before the meeting time-wise. Uh, and maybe we should start the meetings, um, earlier, and the public comment part is part of the meeting, so everybody has to be there when the meeting starts, when public comment starts. I think members have to be very honest with themselves. Um, we all, and I say we, all have missed meetings, we all have left meetings early, uh, we all come late to meetings. So, you know, if, if we're going down this road, you can't decide that you have a function to go to that night, that you're going to get up and just leave, uh, because the meeting's running till nine, ten, or eleven o'clock at night. The comments that I'm hearing about the public about this council, I'll be honest with you, aren't about these type of issues. It's about how dysfunctional we are right now, and how we don't respect each other. And we see that going on right in this meeting now. Um, so I, I think, I'm not sure who everybody's listening to, but, um, you know, before we point fingers at each other, uh, I think we should look at ourselves and how we conduct ourselves. Uh, and Mr. Guy, you mentioned my name. Um, I try to be fair with everyone who comes before the committee to speak. I try to let everybody speak, uh, but there are certain times when you have to step in and, and bring some order, uh, to those meetings, and that's what I've done. But I have never tried to shut anybody down from speaking at any time during any meeting that I've chaired. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
Thank you. Thank you, um, Madam President. Madam Pres, Madam President, are you, are you from, sorry, are you from the law department?
He's only serving as parliamentarian.
He's, he's what?
Only serving as parliamentarian, not as, um, a, a vice for the law department.
Okay. Can we, uh, give an introduction?
Sure. Ed Kosmoski from the law department.
Okay. So he's only acting as a parliamentarian, um...
We didn't do introductions.
Council President.
I, I've, we didn't do introductions, we ran into the meeting, forgive me. See, what'd you say?
He's only acting as a parliamentarian?
Yes, sir, he's only here as a parliamentarian.
Okay, can we ask, can we ask him, um, a question towards, um, when we're talking about committee meetings, um, council, council meetings state that you have two, two five-minute increments, correct? But I don't think in the committee meeting it states that you have two five-minute increments on a agenda item. I don't think it says those specifics.
I don't, I'd have to look into that, I don't have the, each committee rules with me.
Right. So with, with that being said, we don't know as of right now, and I don't think in our rules, it says two minutes, two five-minute increments. So we're, Council President, I think you were counting down the clock on, um, Councilman Guy, but I don't think that we have a discretion of five, two five-minute, when we're talking about, um, committee meetings. That is, when we're talking about the definition of council meetings on an agenda item, you have two five minutes. So with that being said, this legislation right here wouldn't affect public comment or anything like that, could we do that in, in here? But this would also affect, um, people having more than two times or five minutes conversation. And this right here, if it doesn't limit you to five minutes, no, I can have a floor for ten minutes and just talk about what they need to talk about. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we, that's, I don't think that's in the committee, committee rules, but we're putting people on a time limit here to speak. Um, I just want to make sure that we, we respectful to everybody and what the committee rules, committee rules state.
We see no other comments, if this is a resolution and doesn't have the...
I have a last comment, sorry. Okay. I was just totally floored and insulted that we're discussing how long we stay here for meetings. Most people that know me know I hate meetings. In previous jobs, I've not shown up because I hate meetings. But I was selected, most of you were elected, we only meet twice a month. I can't believe that someone would complain about twice a month, we have to stay late. I just, I just cannot believe that that was verbalized. Um, that's what I had to say about that. And also, there was a comment made earlier about other governments and how they function with public comment. Do we want to look like those people in DC, the mess that's on television every day and how they're functioning? I don't think so, at least I don't want to be associated with that. I think that's worse than what people say about us. So I do not think that we need to be fashioning ourself after the way the DC government is, is functioning. And I think that Newark, which is closer to us, and the county which is closer to us, do allow public comment during legislative periods. Uh, we're not that big that we're going to be sitting here until 2:00 AM. And I must address, I don't think I've missed a meeting, and I think I've been there for every public comment in the beginning. But if someone has someplace to go on a particular evening, I don't think that that's negative to adopting this. I mean, we all have lives, I guess, and other things to do. Um, is there other comments? Also, that this legislation, this resolution, so, is so that we can function in real time. Almost everyone functions in real time. All the major corporations have their computers set so that everything is in real time, people can get the information at the same time, and inclusiveness. And I don't know, um, if Councilman Freel's district doesn't have a problem, because Councilman Freel is a seasoned councilman, and he gets to say what he wants to say. But I have people coming up to me every day discussing the, um, Dion, I don't remember his last name, that situation, and why they can't speak, and why they have to get here so early. And someone made a comment that we can make the committee meetings or something earlier. That's part of the problem. It's too early. It's too early for a lot of people to get here from work that would like to come.
I said later, not earlier, I said they used to be earlier, it used to be four, four o'clock.
I think, I think, Mr. Johnson said earlier, so we could make, change committee meetings to make them earlier or something.
You said a comment, we could do the comment period of committee meetings earlier.
Well, that's the same problem. Anything earlier is a problem, I think, for people who are working and want to get here. So that's a problem with earlier. And, um, let's see. And, um, about talking to our constituents, it's, for some reason, in my district, most of my constituents have their meetings on Thursday nights, so it's difficult for me to get there. And also, I've spoken with a lot of constituents, their community do not have community meetings, they aren't organized, and the only opportunity they get to speak is at committee meetings or at council meetings. So I think we need to be in the twenty-first century and allow people to come and speak in real time. And if council members don't want to come in time, well, they have to, they will be in the meeting, but if they don't want to stay, then that's on them.
With that, there's no one from the public here to give any public comment. I hear and see no more comments from members of council, this is a resolution, does not have to be voted out, and will be heard at the November first, um, special meeting.